The council tell you to adopt or deny the recommendation. And I think
Let's see how it's
I think to put this on tonight as either an option or not an adoption of the planning commission's recommendation would be premature since you haven't had the public hearing.
Yeah, and to back Anthony up a bit.
That's right.
First, the readings can begin before the public hearing.
I don't know about that.
We've done that. We've done that multiple times. There's nothing preventing that in the code.
Here's the only thing, here's how I read. For clarification, I guess, but upon receipt of the report, council shall schedule a public hearing within forty days. So you can schedule that at any time. Then it says within thirty days after the public hearing, council shall either adopt or deny the recommendation. So if you're doing anything other than adopting or denying it before the public hearing, then I think it's premature, of course.
With the adoption of the
Recommendation.
With the adoption of the motion, the final motion will take place until January 7th.
But you're starting the process tonight. You're starting it before the public hearing. So I guess what I would say, if I'm opposing you doing this tonight, I'll be doubles out okay, saying, "How can you say you're going to adopt or deny when you haven't had the hearing yet?"
Well, and if I can interject for a second. Regardless of whether planning commission would be required to give the kind of notice that apparently didn't appear, it certainly had been an unpleasant surprise to me to learn tonight that it didn't appear, and it's certainly a departure from our constant practice.
I don't think that's even, I don't even think it's required. I think it's a good thing you do that.
It may not be.
I would continue it, but I don't think that has any bearing on the ordinance as to whether or not council denies or approves it, but I think it's important that you do the hearing before that happens. And I think that's the most important part, to make sure it's performed.
Then your opinion would be to, let's say, we'd have the public hearing
Yes.
At the next meeting, just like we planned, except we push all the readings back.
Exactly. And then it'll be fine. One more, one more meeting. And it'll be fine.
Okay.
But the council sets the, not the planning commission, the council sets
Exactly.
We have to do it as a council, not as the
Exactly. This is a public hearing for
So the, Anthony, the public hearing is going to be the only actual time that the public will be able to come in and voice their opinions about this? I guess the, and I understand that, I mean, if you read the ORC, which if you're rezoning less than ten parcels, which is what we're looking at here. So that does make sense to me. The only thing is that, and I know that we're having this issue with other, with ARB, with other things, where you have a meeting advertised, and we do have to advertise all our meetings, obviously, any board or commissioner or subcommittee of the council. They're all public meetings, they all have to follow the same sunshine laws, and give the residents the opportunity to come in. We have meetings of ARB, we don't tell people what the meeting is going to be about, they have no idea. Same situation here.
Yeah, I should clarify my statement and my comment. The notice requirement and the hearing requirement is to comply with your ordinance. What you're talking about is to comply with statute, and I agree with both. I think the more advertising, the more notice you give to the public, the better. You can't ever go wrong by advertising and publicizing enough. You can't run into problems if you don't. And I think when I said you didn't have, the fatal flaw of not advertising it does not pertain to the ordinance, but it could pertain to the statute. So I think to make sure you're covered in that vein, then notice should have been sent out to comply with this. It's not fatal for your ordinance, though, to decide as a council whether or not you want to adopt or deny the resolution.
Okay, so then we should, we should schedule a public hearing for two weeks from time. I'm sure you have some agreement. Well, we haven't, we haven't given notice yet.
So we have to follow this section of code, which allows thirty days' notice before and written notice from the clerk to go out into all the, well, the section of code tells you exactly who, adjacent properties, everybody in that area who needs to be notified, by letter.
I don't think it's thirty days.
Twenty days. Twenty days on the written notices, thirty days on the public notice. Our local, and if you recall, I don't remember who was here and who wasn't at the time, I guess I'm getting my age away, but Ruth always used to make a point of telling us that our local ordinance sets it at forty days, and yet the ORC says thirty days on setting a public hearing. And so we always complied with the ORC.
So we have to give thirty days. We can't have the, the public hearing before thirty days.
It's in front of
Well, I think what it says
Or does it have to have a Our says within thirty days of notice to council.
Yeah, once you receive this from Michael, which is November 20th, you have forty-five days to set a public hearing.
So within that time, right?
Once in that forty-five days, which would be December 17th, which is plenty of time, that hearing is held, you then have thirty days to adopt or deny the recommendation. And that would be at your next meeting that you have, next council meeting. That all fits perfectly within that timeframe.
The section of code that I just gave you? It says thirty days, and does it have to do specifically with rezoning?
Well, it does the zoning regulations. Let me read through them one more time.
Now, our local one is saying schedule a public hearing in forty days, but I think that was controversy we always had, that our local said forty
The problem with thirty days was always that oftentimes our free readings, kind of first, the first meeting, public hearing, oftentimes the final was outside of that thirty days.
Well, what's interesting is this talk about if you are intending to rezonate. Well, you know, you are.
We are.
So, okay. Hearing. To the, to the landowners contiguous to the property we're talking about here, within twenty days, that's what it's talking about. Notice has to be sent to them of the hearing, which you're pushing up against now, obviously. Let me read this through again in more detail. But I think you're fine right now, and you have the date set with the public hearing on the 17th, the next scheduled hearing that council has to act upon the recommendation of the zoning board after a public hearing is held on that recommendation.
Public hearing on the 17th of December? How many days out is that from now?
Fourteen.
That doesn't mean you give the twenty days notice to the written notice.
How do I get out the, things within twenty days?
You ready?
Get that a special meeting.
Yeah.
We just moved it back.
Right.
The first meeting in January, January, or
Well, we're not a special meeting. As long as you do it by January, first week in January, I think you're going to be okay. Because going from the date of this, which is November 20th, forty-five days out, comply with the ordinance, we'll push it to January 50, around your order, maybe seven, to say these, to be conservative. So as long as you have a public hearing within about an amount of time, and you send notice out of a public hearing before then to comply with the twenty-day provision, then you'll be okay. So let's say we pick a date tonight.
The notice?
We pick a date tonight, and I would say within three weeks from tomorrow, notice goes out. So you've got then at 4th, 11th, 18th, 25th, Christmas. I would say you do between the 25th and the first week of January, the first of January to do the public hearing. And I listen every letting him that.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's talk specific dates here. Do you want to look at a calendar?
Yeah.
Sure.
Do we already have the report from the planning commission? Because that was supposed to come to council, but I didn't get one.
You know, it may not look like a report, it's just a one-page with my signature at the bottom of it.
You mean, just those minutes that show
No, those aren't minutes, those, that is the report.
The vote from that meeting?
Yes.
That, but that does not fit
That's a report.
compliance of, the report should contain written statements of approval, disapproval, modification, the reasons for the decisions and relation of the decision to the rest of the zoning code, and any accepted village comprehensive plan. So it would be a little more lengthy, certainly, than just that little, I have that. It shows the vote.
No, it's in that paragraph, it's just short.
That's it?
Yep. There's
Well, it's incorrect in a sense, it says that public notice of the meeting and the topic, and topic having been, had been read
Oh yeah, that's totally incorrect, I didn't know that. Yeah, I didn't know that till tonight.
So that, that is, these minutes are really just not correct.
Well, hey, those aren't minutes. That's the report. And B, you're right, that's totally incorrect, I didn't know that till tonight. What we had was a submission from Paula of what she always does, I guess. I mean, it's the vindicator's mistake, that, you know, I don't want to be throwing Paula under the bus. And it's dreadful, I mean, it's, it's complete departure from our usual practice, but, you know, how that affects this, I don't know. I only know my own little But yeah, in my opinion, to go into too much detail under that ordinance for the planning commission's report creates more issues than it solves. The, you'll find, even though that, that is a relatively short report, that it actually answers the questions that are required to be answered by 1268. They're just short answers.
Is there a way for us to go back and start over again? I mean, I feel that really our residents have been
Sure. What I would say, you don't have to start over again, but what you can do is this, because the time starts running from when the hearing is held by the planning commission, and you have forty-five days. Within sixty days, the planning commission has to do their report. So when was the meeting held?
Twenty.
November 20th.
Okay, so you have sixty days from November 20th.
But that wasn't a proper meeting.
Well, that, I didn't know we were, okay.
That was a proper meeting, however, notice of the topic of the meeting was not given.
Right, and that's the key thing.
There's no requirements in the code.
I don't think that's, no, I don't think we need to worry about that part, I think
I mean, in fairness to the people, the residents.
There's no requirement
In fairness to people.
There still will be a public hearing.
I know, but it's, but you've acted without input from anybody.
Well, certainly
I'd say something, there were three residents there. So they did come to the meeting, they were aware of it, and they did speak in favor of the development. There was no opposition.
We're here trying to follow the code, we're not saying, you know,
Here's what I
It would be nice to do this, it would be nice to do that. We need to follow the regulations.
I think as of this moment, you can still fall in compliance with the code if you do things. There's no doubt that you could do it better if you would start all over again, have another hearing, advertise it to the vindicator, set a public hearing in the planning commission, have that hearing, do a more detailed report, send it to council, starts the clock all over again. You could do that, and we don't have to talk about all these different things. Or, the only other thing you can do is, in my opinion, you started the clock running on November 20th, that gives you sixty days, December, January 20th, to give us a report. The council could say this is not a report, or it's not accurate, or it's not complete. You can submit another report to us, a more detailed, more thorough report. That would then start thirty-day notice and the twenty-day notice that we have to comply with. That gives you a little bit more time to start it for council clock, if you will, to comply with the code, and I can tell you then how to do that. The thing that you are then running up against, if it's a problem, I don't think it is, but if you're concerned about it, is did you give notice about the planning commission hearing? Was the public informed about it? Could they have done anything as far as been represented and spoken?
Are they allowed to speak at those hearings?
Then, then I think there could be a point made, because it could affect the decision of the planning commission that was then sent to the council.
Yeah, we often spend more time listening than talking ourselves.
So, so, you know, in that, I don't know that there's a rush, I'm not aware of the whole situation, but if there's not a rush, then I would say you just set up another hearing, you advertise it, and make sure it's in the vindicator, make sure the public had notice, and you start all over again.
All right, 7:30, please, Mr. State, for public hearings, please. Pleasure, Mr. State. To the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice. We'll call the members.
Mr. Sett, here.
Attorney General, there, is the major.
Here.
Mr. Sinek.
President.
Mr. Gaff.
Here.
I'd like to suspend the orders of the day and continue on with our conference.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Would we need a motion to do that, or how would we go about doing that?
No, I don't think you have to, because, you know, unless council wants to act upon the recommendations made to you thus far, and is in agreement to act on this, either set a public hearing or to do whatever council wishes to do, if council is in agreement that it's better to start all over again, I think you can do that without any problems. I don't think, as I said, it never hurts to publicize too much, it never hurts to have another hearing, to hear the folks, and to let, to let that process start again. No one's going to be able to say what you did and hear our side about this.
Right. How does the rest of council feel about this? I mean, I think, you know, I feel very strongly that we respect the rights of our taxpayers and residents, and that we give them every opportunity, and if it means that we have to drag it out a little bit longer, then so be it.
I agree with that, I think, in fairness to our, I mean, we don't have too many of these hearings on a limited land, and we should do it in a fair way for our residents.
So we start over, our upcoming planning meetings, what you would recommend would be, like, we never had the last one, basically?
Yeah, have another public, have another planning commission meeting, advertise it that this will be the topic, and then, I think you're completely covered. Now we know the timeframe, that once they do their report, you have sixty days for them to get it to us, thirty days to the set of the hearing, forty-five days to the not
Then this, and you did it for so many years, how, how, how does script get the vindicator posted? You say what it is, like, R1 to R2 for
Yeah, a brief description of what it is you're actually going to do.
Well, you're not just going to say R1 to R2, you're going to say R1 to R2 for
That particular property.
For apartments, you put that in a paper?
I don't think the commission, I don't think it needs to, should be really looking at the project. It needs to be looking at whether that property is appropriate for R2.
Well, that's kind of the question.
Well, that's what we're saying.
Yeah, you, well, you're bringing the, the project, the specifics of the project itself.
Because the layperson's going to go, "Okay, R1, R2, what's that mean? I have no idea."
And what piece of property are we talking about? I think that's what's really vital, is because the residents need to know what piece of property we're talking about.
And so when it comes to council, at that time is when it will be presented as to what the perceived scope is going to be. If our planning, when it comes to council, and we have a three-year exam.
Oh yeah, council needs some
Well, no, I'm talking about a form of public. Because right now, they're going to say, see R1, R2 across and pull.
I would just, I would just announce it, see how the title of the ordinance sits before the right.
I just want to, you know, people are going to come out, they need to know what they're going to come out about, that's all. If you see R1, R2 for parcel 36, that's
The thing is, the planning commission is not going to be approving the project.
Right.
I mean, we have nothing to do with approving the project. The job of the planning commission is changing the zone.
And actually, maybe I should interject, this will be, if, if it proceeds beyond council, there's an even further intermediary step. This project, as proposed, requires a trip to the Board of Zoning Appeals after council, if approved. The zone change leads to the proposed use being a permitted use, that it isn't before, but then there's, I forget exactly what, I don't think the footprint of the building is an issue anymore, because
Yes, it is, it's the
Oh, thank you.
Percentage, the percentage of land use came into compliance with the redesign. So it's, the footprint exceeds the 3,000 feet, and the, we're going from, I think R2 allows a sixplex
That's right.
Whereas your proposal would twelveplex.
So there's another
So there's two variances.
Right, but, but they can't apply for the variances until the zone change happens, so of course, if the zone change never happens, the variance application will never happen. That's actually the reason I abstained from the vote, is because I'm on zoning appeals now, too, so I'm going to have to
Oh, I see, okay.
Be at every meeting.
So what you're saying, when we post this in the vindicator, it's just going to say R1, R2, and do our number, and that's all that's going to be out there?
I mean, that's, that's really all the planning commission should concern itself, but we've not, the planning commission is not approving the project.
Well, you, you could put a brief, one-phrase description of what R1 and R2 are. I mean, it's a change from single-family housing residential construction to multifamily. And that's, that's an accurate statement you could do.
Of course they're not, the planning commission cannot look, should not look at the project itself. We should look at the property and whether the property is appropriate for R2.
So you're looking at the project, though?
The property, no. Looking at property or
Is the property appropriate for
The project, looking at the project, though, what's going to put on the
But I think Mike is correct, because he's explaining the difference between simple family and multi.
Right.
And, and that's important for the residents to know exactly what we're doing from R1 to R2, what that means to them.
Sure, yeah, and to a certain, I'm sorry, sir, to a certain extent, you have to look at both questions, and you have to look at them independently. Because we have to balance the limitations of a properly constructed zoning code versus the right of a property owner to some economically viable use of their property. If we stray too far in either direction at any point, denying economically viable uses through over strictness or being sloppy and too relaxed, which is never going to be our problem, then, you know, it, it, it's not, I think, improper in any way to say you have got to consider both of those questions, but it's very true to say that the question of whether R2 zoning is appropriate for this piece of land has to be considered independently and first.
So, yeah, I would say that there should be a little more of them there, but, yeah, the R2 allows multifamily dwellings and buildings of a footprint within 3,000 square feet.
Okay, so, let's run this by us again, so we know we're doing it right. So we're going to advertise for this, okay? And then, planning commission votes again?
Yes.
Okay, go through the whole process again.
Yes.
Okay.
And make a report, as, as this is the tenants have a report, I, I see my point, I do see the conforming language with the ordinance in the report, but I understand your, your position about one more. And I imagine if there's a hearing held, there will be more anyway.
Yeah, just shoot us a formal request that you want a more detailed report. We'll have to comply. We'll be more detailed.
And then once council, I mean, I think you could take them, ask them tonight for it as a formal request, but, then I think once council gets the, the report, then within forty-five days, they have to set a hearing. When they set that hearing, we have to make sure that there's twenty days for what you notice can go out, contiguous landowners, and thirty days to the whole community. Then once council has their public hearing, then within thirty days, they have to act on that hearing and either adopt or deny the recommendation of the commission.
So like thirty days, then three days?
No, you have thirty days to view the per reading. If it's a denial, then it's done. If it's approval
Let's look at specific dates, you have to just step by steps, make sure that we have this right. So December 18th, then we'll put out a notice tomorrow for the vindicator, or it'll be a public hearing of the plan, for the planning commission on December 18th at 7 o'clock.
No.
Yeah, this is for the planning commission hearing. The council was asking for, is not necessarily required, but they're asking for.
They think you have, is that twenty days?
That's fourteen.
You have to give another week. I think it's got to be twenty days.
For the planning commission hearing, or for the, for the council's public hearing?
You know, from what I can tell from any zoning hearing, then it's got to be at least twenty. And then I would say you go to the, to the lowest denominator of time you can go to that. You can't go wrong by giving a little, one or two.
So the planning meeting is what date?
I would say it's got to be after the 24th, just to be safe.
Normally, we, we had planned on, we, we
It could be on the third Wednesday, the 18th.
You said we couldn't do the fourth week because
Well, it's 25th, it's Christmas anyways.
Oh, come on.
Okay, that's me and Christmas. Beer house. So they'll put you, like, the 30th is a Monday, or if you want to do that, the 7th is a Friday.
Okay.
So you run
Smart hand.
27th of December, Friday, 30th is a Monday, maybe this will work for you, be me in town?
Oh, Friday, in between the holidays?
Yes.
Okay. For council or for planning?
Planning.
Twenty-seventh.
What area you said to me? December 18th?
Well, we can't talk about this on 18th, this is not twenty days, it's only, it's fourteen days from now to the 18th.
I think to give notice to the homeowners and to the public, I think
Oh, well, yes, I'm sorry, yeah, just said it to you.
Do you understand that to the, for the planning commission meeting as well as
I do, I pay any notice of the zoning change.
Okay.
I mean, I, I think you can't go wrong with, you've seen that.
True, okay.
Okay, so 12/27, planning commission. Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
You said we have to give twenty days of contiguous landowners, thirty days to the public? Thirty days is changing. This is so far off of what we normally have done.
But what normal advertisement can get?
I, I mean, I'm okay with, doesn't make a difference to me, but this is not a regular process.
January 27th, thirty days. I just don't want you to write it all down and then write it around the side of the way, that's not right either.
I'd like to throw something out there. I had spoken with Tim Rupert, who is the president of the condo association from Yellow Creek Peter, I'm sorry, I apologize, Yellow Creek Ledges, and he informed me that all owners of condominiums in that development are joint, have joint ownership of the common area. So in other words, the contiguous properties are not just the units that abut the subject property, it would be every condo in the development. Okay? Does everybody understand? So they, they have equal and common ownership of the common
Every
It has to be every
Kids, let
Yes, every unit in the ledges, not just the ones that abut the subject.
I believe that would be fine. I think the thirty-day notice applies more towards legislative
Okay.
Yeah, no, thank you, as I read it again, before the legislative authority
Back to 27.
Yes, I think you're fine with that.
Okay, 12/27, public, your planning commission.
Okay, now, I may ask.
Yes.
The twenty, the twenty days, those letters have to go out by the 7th of December?
Yes.
Those letters are in regard to the public hearing of council.
Yeah, they don't have to go out
Oh.
No, that's the planning commission.
No, not the planning commission, just
That's so
Right, that'll be when you report a sentence to the council. Then those letters go out, contiguous
So I don't send out any letters?
No, no.
Because we're just repeating the steps, the only, and there wasn't anything that they did wrong here?
No.
It was the vindicator not putting the add-in that made this whole thing
Can I ask one more question? In January, council adopted a resolution setting the meeting dates for all councils of committee boards and commissions. On that was the date and time of the planning commission, which said every day, and every week, and whatever time, and the location. Does that need for the notification qualification? Although it didn't say
We're not following that.
Although it didn't say what the agenda item was.
We're not following that, though.
Did we have to change it? Did we vote on a resolution to change it?
No. I get it. Put it off until January.
So you're just setting meetings as you go, is that what you're doing?
Pretty much.
And you're advertising all of those meetings?
We announced
Announced it in council sessions, you mean?
Yes.
So that does not give that with notice according to the sunshine laws for our residents to know when those meetings are being held. All of those notices have to go out through poll, they have to go up to the newspaper, so that our residents know they're going on.
On a continual basis, you're saying? I don't have...
If you're changing it, I mean, it's fine if, like Jeff is saying, at the beginning of the year, we say finance is going to meet this day, once a month, or the entire year.
Anytime you change that, you need to notify.
Right, then you need notification to the public.
But when they cancel it for that month, you just announce that council, the meeting's going to be canceled for them.
Right.
Because we don't have a warrant.
Right.
That makes those...
Well, actually, when you think about it, you could show up here for a meeting and it would be a notice posted that the meeting is canceled. That's not going to hurt a taxpayer's right so much as conducting a meeting with business that affects them or that they're interested in knowing something about.
Their expectations in the paper all the time, the board being for times for cancel. Those are all the time.
Well, regardless, we're going to send those to this meeting, it's going to be, it's going to be in the papers.
Okay.
On the 27th, right.
So, this is your regular scheduled December meeting, but it's just been postponed from the 18th, and now you're having it only on Saturday.
Okay, and there'll be notice in the newspaper to that effect, and the reason for the meeting. The time we have this meeting, you want to do it early?
Yeah, we'll do it 7:00.
4:00 maybe? 4:00, is that, okay. Would like to work past 4:00?
Yeah, I want to go to 5:30.
5:30, thank you. Thank you, 5:30. Then, after that...
Where's Michael?
He left. Sorry, sorry. Then, after that, he has to write a report.
And, and whatever, he uses this as the template and just make sure it's a little more expansive. He knows the language, put it in, he put it in this one, but just a little bit more, I would say.
Okay, then the public hearing for the council will hold?
Right, you'd have, that would have to be 7 to 45 days after the receipt of the report by council. So, once his timestamp is put in everyone's boxes, that starts to clock on him, the public hearing for council has to be held.
Okay, how much notice do you have to give to the public before the public hears?
I would say at that point, then you're on the 20, 30-day clock. So, once council receives the report and sends out notice to the homeowners and 30-day notice to the vindicator, that's still, I, I understand that why they set the 45 days because it gives you time to follow up on that 45-day period, 30, 20.
Write it more than once, too.
Run the...
Write it every week, okay? Our residents, this is a major change.
So, after, after December 27th...
So, it should go out within a couple of days.
Yeah.
Would need to go out a couple of days, actually.
Yeah. Because remember, though, it doesn't necessarily go from the time of the hearing on the 27th, it only goes from when the reporter's done reporting and put in the box.
Right.
So, once that happens, then you have the 45 days as the outset of your time.
So, let's say, let's say that we tell Michael that report has to be submitted no later than Friday the 3rd, that gives him a week, I mean, it's holidays.
Okay, so, if you're on Friday the 3rd, then that's 7, 21, 28, and then 30. So, the notices have to be sent out by February 3rd to the vindicator and to the homeowner.
Or anytime before that.
Right, time before that. The deadline is February 3rd. And then, the deadline for the hearing, to me, would be February 17th. That would be 44 days.
Okay, then I propose that we have the, the public hearing before the council meeting of January 23rd?
No.
Of February 10th.
Sending out the notices on February 3rd?
January.
No, he's a senator.
So, that's the deadline. That's the deadline, you can send them out anytime you send them out.
Yeah, you have, let's say Michael, let's say Michael submits the report to council by January 3rd of what the recognition of the pin is, you have 30 days from that day to send notice to...
Or anytime before.
You've got to get 30 days notice, so if you send out notice on the 6th.
Okay.
Okay, to the homeowners and to the vindicator, then you can have a meeting for...
Because either way, we could have it on the 14th.
Do they need 30 days for 30 days?
You need 30 days.
If they have a 30-day window before you can have a meeting.
Right, so you're looking at it, Eddie, Eddie, I would say the February 4th meeting here would be when you could go over the...
February 4th would be the public hearing?
Yes.
In the first reading?
Yes. Yep. And that would be, give you a week's, you know, buffer.
Second reading would be on the 18th. And the third and final reading would be March 4th.
Send them out on the 6th of January?
That's not 30 days.
That's not 30 days. If I send them out on the 6th of January, February 4th is not 30 days.
Be 20.
But the vindicator has to have it for 30.
It has to be public, it would have to be 30 days after public.
6, 7, 8, before the 28 days.
Do I have to write everything down?
Yeah, before the 28, you're right.
Or have a special...
31st, you remember?
We can't set any dates until we get the report.
First, we have to get the report.
Well, I'm trying to set the dates for, make it convenient for these people that are trying to get this project done.
No, 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 but we can't do anything until Michael Thompson puts the report in our mailbox.
Well, I want to give him a deadline, just to make it be, it gets done, so it follows our council meeting.
I mean, he, he may have it done on Saturday, right after the meeting.
He did the last one, right after.
Yeah.
I'll get the 30th.
Yeah, I mean, but we don't know that until we receive it.
If he gets the report done the 30th, then you're back on for the 4th.
Do it Monday, 30th.
Has to be in your boxes, yeah, submitted to council.
It has to be back.
It just has to be there.
For about 30, then, okay. Then, we're back to February 4th, public hearing, first reading, second reading, 18th, third reading, March 4th.
Would you be sure that all the council gets that report?
We, putting everything on.
I do not get it. Well, you're talking about just this little thing, yes, I did get that.
Oh, yeah.
You did get that, okay.
Yeah, let's, let's let the other... Jenny, why don't you come up and talk about the hearing for us, sorry to interrupt.
General voice, everybody, to the commission members. I'm here tonight representing the historical markers of the Paul Goach Gardens. Sit back and relax, if you have, nothing is asked of you. I'm here bearing gifts, as a matter of fact. The goal of the 2013 committee of these, for the historical markers, has been, the goal was to survey all of the 19th-century homes in Poland that exhibited an historical marker like this. And, we wanted to create a brochure and list all these homes in it. And secondarily, we wanted to make a picture album, a picture book, with pictures of all these homes in it. And tonight, we want to do that, we wanted to send to you, the village, the residents, and visitors to Poland, the picture book and the brochures. But first, I want to introduce members of the committee that are here tonight, Jackie Bonifus and Chris Bonifus, and Lindy McMurray, and the people who aren't here for some reason are, I want to mention their names, Sue Beal, Catherine Jacobs, Margaret Ann Jonas, and Lorraine Serentoro. There are some friends here tonight that helped us greatly. One is Dave Smith, he is with the Historical Society, and he's a trustee there, and he's been just an enormous help to us with, during the research from these homes and with the dates and the original owners, it was not an easy task, and he had access to a lot of good information at the Historical Society, and his wife Joan and he have contributed most of the pictures that we have in the album, and we're very grateful to them. Another person I've got to mention is Barry Jones with GE Sign, he did a great job with these. He, he, the original signs were made of wood, and he redesigned them and made them acrylic, so that, he's done a terrific job with that. And two other people I got to mention, but they're no longer with us, they have, they used to be very active in the community, Virginia and Carl Fetter, some of you may have heard of them or know, knew them, they are deceased now, but it was Virginia, she was a member of the garden club, and it was her idea during the bicentennial celebration in 1976 to do this project. And she and her husband were the, they were the motivation behind it. And Carl made these markers out of wood, he carved each one with his jigsaw, I guess it was a jigsaw, hand, hand-lettered the markers, and of course, that's been, that was 37 years ago, and a lot of them have fallen in disrepair, so they've been replaced. So, now, over, the, the program was started in 1976 with Virginia and Carl, and there's a history of those 37 years over there on the, on the, by the window, that gives you an idea of who was involved in the project through the years. Now, this is the moment to show you the brochure, and here it is. I'm very proud of it. It's, the first page talks about the, the program. Markers are only on houses that, I mean, the, the, there's 75 houses listed inside the brochure, 75 houses out of about 100 houses that are eligible. These are 19th-century homes in Poland. We focused on those because those are the homes that give Poland the, the historic Western Reserve character of the village, the Greek revival and the federal white type of calling that you see all over. And we've limited to those buildings. The back of the brochure gives a little bit of the history of the Poland of the, I've got the glasses on here, the town, town one, range one, 1796, and the distinctive flavor of the village, which we have been able to maintain and we're all so proud of. The beginning, the first page of this brochure, we talk about the fact that it gives people that come to the village and people who live in the village an opportunity to celebrate the heritage of our village, and also gives visitors an opportunity to appreciate what we have here. The plaque is in the shape of Ohio, and the CA means approximate, the dates are approximate. You wouldn't believe the, for one building, the, the different dates of the different sources give for that building, but we did a lot of, of thinking about it and collaborating and visiting the courthouse and came up with an approximate date. But, Dave, I don't know, what would you say, approximate within five or so years?
Best case of you.
Yeah, we don't, we aren't wedded to that. And the, the name of the original occupant of the house is on here, and once again, that is, that's sometimes hard to figure out. Most of the houses have one name on them, this one has two, because whenever there's a McKinley association with a house, that's going to be on there. And this was Sarah Duncan, this is the house on Main Street, and she, Sarah McKinley married at Duncan, so we made sure that McKinley's name was on there. This is an ongoing project, and we're still trying to get those last houses, these owners to, to sign up with us. And the brochures will be here, the picture book is here, and I'll just show you like this, and that'll be kept in the office. And, let's see if I've forgotten anything, I don't think I have. We're very happy that this, that we completed this, and we're very happy to do this to you, and we hope that it gives you pleasure and everyone else to come and visit.
Thank you.
Motion to consider the new orders of the day?
Second.
All favor. opposed? All right, acceptance of the limits from the previous council meeting. Make a motion to be accepted and written and weighed the reading.
I have to make one change on those, Jeff.
It's been a second before you took it, it was just...
Could you...
So, one second at first?
Second.
What's taken?
The change to a motion for executive exception, personnel, and to include the word employment.
Is employment a category?
It is. It's one of the reasons you can go personnel. Would you like to see it?
No.
It's signed off?
All favor, second is with that correction.
I know.
All right, notification of meetings and events to the public and news media, bleeper. Before the council meeting, I was getting paid, that's 3:00. Finances?
Not at this time.
Legislation, nothing. Police?
We will meet next month in January.
Streets?
17th at 6:30.
Boards, ARB?
As always, we meet the first Thursday of the month, which will be December 5th, 7:00 PM Village Hall.
Planning?
December 27th at 5:30.
Forest zoning changes?
I think scheduled right now.
West Reserve Fire District?
We will have our, our monthly meeting, which will be December 11th at 7:00 PM at the Poland Township Building, and that's December 11th.
Forest Park? In High Memorial.
Right, Thomas.
Report for mayor, I don't really have anything other than just reminding everyone that this Saturday is the wedding of the village, I know that I've seen the signs and what, maybe today, yesterday, or... So, that's, it's right on the corner. And also, just thank the side tailor for the beautiful village, really, I mean, it's wonderful. 7:00, 5:30, the festivities start on this Saturday until 7:30, various locations around the village.
Motion to accept mayor's report?
Second.
All favor. opposed? All right, report from fiscal officer, Nick.
All right, I'm going to circulate around a list of bills to be made this month. As you remember, I sent out the letters at the last meeting for Isolstein, Joel, and Main Street. Isolstein's stuff is still in here sitting, so, it's still here. I received a phone call from, you know, Mr. Joel, which we discussed. You should...
Talk about it.
Okay, and that's it on item two. I am starting to prepare the 2014 temporary appropriation ordinance that will be done for the next, you know, meeting. As in the past, we have always done, like, fourth of the year, just so that it gets us through. And then, I will also be preparing the 2013 appropriation ordinance amendment, which will be needed here to finalize the bills for the meeting of the 17th. That will have the large bills like the electric and the shovel, so, those will have to be adjusted. And the last thing, I'm just going to circulate these POs now. If you're able to assign them and get them back to me somewhere along the road here, they get lost in the shuffle, so, if I can just have them back, still, you can. And that's the end of my report.
Motion to... Staff members, all favor?
All right.
I got, I received, I received a letter from Newman Olson Kerr, um, in response to the letter that our fiscal officer sent, Yules, about the, was that a tree bill? And I feel bad that the fiscal officer took the, the brunt of the, um, complaint that the letter that was sent by him was not as friendly as they would have liked, I guess. But I drafted the letter, not him. And I drafted in accordance with what our ordinance requires. So, it was not meant to be anything by informative and stating, um, the village disposition. Um, what I, what I sent to both them and the, and the homeowner of the bank building, said that we have an ordinance wherein if the trees are cut down and are deemed to be a danger to the community, that if the person's property, uh, that the tree was on, um, we would send them the bill if they did not take it down. And that's what we did. So, I got a letter from Newman Olson Kerr saying that they took, um, um, offense to our letter that in September of 2003, um, we had asked them to pay for a tree to be cut down and they gave us, um, an indication that Mr. Yule had gone and measured from the streets to his property and found that it was indeed the village's property and not his. I disagreed with that, or I disagreed till now, I should say. So, I'm gonna send him, uh, the attorney of Ted Jordan, a copy of the letter from Attorney Leal, along my opinion that we need to pay for. So, I'm just gonna wait to hear back from him and see what they say. And that's all I have.
Motion to accept the solicitor's report?
Second. All favor? All right. Opposed? Report from chief of police and street commissioner.
Report from, please.
Motion to accept.
Second. All favor? All right. Opposed? Report from chief of police and street commissioner. Report from, please. All right. Report from engineer.
No.
Report from outstanding committees of council, finances, wage, audit, insurance.
Um, the mayor was actually kind enough to ask his, um, associate, um, Joe Mercer. He came in and met with some of us who are interested and caring about, uh, the comparison with the, uh, hospitalization issues. And, uh, he was very reassuring that we were handling it correctly, um, doing what we needed to do for right now. And of course, we all know that as this thing is evolving, we're getting change after change. As a matter of fact, I got a call today, um, because people complained, I guess, about, um, the president saying that you could keep your current insurance, um, a lot of the insurance companies issued letters. Did you just come get this letter, Kelly?
No, you didn't ask me.
Okay, 'cause, yeah, nobody seems to have gotten the letter. But anyway, um, she is going to email me the letter. Um, the letter basically says from Medical Mutual that we can, they want us to be well aware that we can keep our present insurance to our old date, which we already knew this, okay? And come March, we don't know what we're gonna get hit with. Which, that is the reason why National Healthcare is saying to us, "Take the new renewal date." Because do you wanna pay two months at the lower cost and then get hit with this really gigantic jump? Or do you wanna lock in for this year? Things may change again during the course of this year, but at least we'll be locked in at the only 7.05% increase, okay? Instead of getting a wall of being 20% maybe come March.
I thought we had read it down.
We did. But now because of this change, they're issuing these letters saying, "Tell us that you are okay with locking in. This is like your last chance because of what happened." But people complain about not being able to keep their current insurance. Okay, so, from my perspective and hearing what National Healthcare had to say, we're doing the right thing. If there's anybody who disagrees with that and does not want us to renew this, we have a couple days before we can withdraw this. I think that would be dumb, really. I mean, if you just look at the numbers alone, as far as those fees that are going to kick in with January 1st, those fees come regardless. And I think that, that's a big part of the confusion. No matter what insurance you have, you're gonna pay those fees. The only difference is who collects it. In some situations, um, the person submits them themselves, where we have like Medical Mutual, they actually collect the fee and they submit it to, to the government. Those are government fees. Those are not fees that the insurance company's gonna absorb. So, either way, you're gonna pay it. Okay? And that's the one where we talked about in the letter, $5.80 plus another 18 cents per each worker and actually each person that we insure for that worker, okay? And then the small market value, um, increase, which is like 2.4%, which is going to also be tapped on. And those are government fees. Those are not fines. They're government fees and everybody across the board is gonna have to pay those. Fines would be something else if we didn't make other changes. So, we seem to be on track. Um, Joe was kind enough to come in and speak with us and take the time to answer our questions and, um...
So, do we station on 50 people? Are we under the 50 people?
We are under the 50 people. And what that means, and if anybody saw those sheets that, um, the flow chart, that was a really good, um, explanation of it. But that actually referred to in whether you need to offer a plan or not, a general plan. And we didn't have to offer a plan. And there are some entities our size who are saying, "It's going away. We're not gonna provide hospitalization to our employees anymore. Everybody go out on the marketplace and get your own." Okay? Maybe in some instances, if we can afford to give you a subsidy, we'll give you a monthly subsidy. If not, we don't give you anything. So, in our situation, under 50, we were able to do that if we wanted to. I don't think anybody really wanted to do that. Um, could it come to that someday? If we were in financial stress? Yeah, it could come to that. Right now, we don't have to do that. We still wanna try to give our employees a hospitalization plan. So, meaning that first flow chart, um, you know, we don't have any fines as far as that goes because we are offering a plan of our own choice in that respect. So, you know, the only thing is then that we offer it consistently to our employees, not just pick and choose who we give a plan to.
When was Joey Mercer here?
It was a Friday.
Friday.
I forget what day it was.
Two weeks ago. Two weeks, right?
Two weeks.
We wanna make sure we were compliant, that if we had to offer to anyone because of the amount of hours that the government now is setting the minimum that, that we weren't compliant. And we aren't. So, we wanna make sure we covered that, that we understood when to buy in or to wait.
And the numbers, also 50, right?
Well, there's, there's a formula that they use.
Right. And regardless, Joe, when, when you look at our situation, because we're under 50, we don't have to give insurance to anyone.
Correct, yeah.
To anyone. But we do have to be consistent from a legal standpoint. We, we can't just say, "Some people can have it and some people can't." Yeah. So, that, so that's the thing. We need verification.
We are, we're consistent across the board. And I felt pretty good about that after the meeting and talking to Russ and making sure that we covered it. We're consistent.
We only offer insurance to our full-time employees. Do we now have to offer for part-time?
No. So, we have to know the definition of full-time and respect that definition. So, that's where we're at with that. So, I think we did the right thing. I think financially, we did the right thing for now. And nobody has the crystal ball that we can say we can offer a plan forever because nobody knows. This thing is evolving constantly and changing and the laws may change again, who knows? Um, so for right now, I think we're doing the best that we can do with it.
Sure.
And, um, we will be probably planning a finance meeting in January sometime. Um, as soon as we get our final numbers, I like to get an early jump on the budget so we could start looking at that. Think about, um, if your schedules are suitable to that. If not, if you prefer not to be on finance, let our president of council know that. If you, you know, have difficulty, I realize that it's a difficult time during budget plan, January, February, bond meetings and whatever. So, you know, if you prefer not to be on finance committee because of that, please let Joe know so that we can change it. We need people who are available for those meetings.
Who did you invite to this meeting with your person?
Everyone was invited. I sent an email out to everyone.
Oh, an email.
We had to be careful though, that we didn't violate the sunshine laws of how many members of council, so we, we thought it was interesting coming. We were okay with the sunshine laws and...
Any reports?
Question book, accept the financial report.
Second. All favor? All right. Opposed? Uh, legislation and policy?
Nothing.
Police and fire?
Uh, the police met tonight before, for your state of council meeting. And in Russ's report, he talked about, um, one of our part-time, um, officers is resigning. Um, cadet will be moving up to fill that vacant position as soon as he finishes all, all the training. Um, Russ would like to be invited to the finance committee meetings and be informed on anything on insurance. And he did say, um, right now, we have four full-time police officers. Years prior to this, we had six. And right now, we have six part-time officers. And I know we've talked about hiring another full-time, starting next year to help out. And that's it.
Second. All favor? All right. Opposed? Street sidewalks and drainage?
Well, one thing, um, I reached out to ODAC and State Highway. I've got numerous calls about the entrance on the 680 off of 224.
680?
680, 224, that entrance, multiple people were stranded on it. And, uh, I'd appreciate if you would get a hold of Gary.
Wait, I'm gonna teach you the ramp in or what?
The concrete barrier they put, that concrete dividing ramp.
Okay. Well, to get on 680?
224, you get on 680, you depend north.
Okay.
Multiple, multiple people were stranded on that over the hallway.
Oh, they didn't know that you could stand two lanes?
There was a couple of snow and you could try to cut across.
Oh, okay. Okay, they gotta put a sign or something like that.
Well, I want you to get a hold of Gary and I want you to have him on the line.
To do what? What would you say?
Something, 'cause that's not acceptable.
Oh, they're not acceptable.
I'll talk to him also, they're in my office.
They, they closed it down. They'll, you couldn't get on 680 on that ramp. They closed it because people were, I saw the cars on, on the ramp.
Stuck, stuck on the, on the...
Night or day, it's, it's poor design.
The whole thing's a poor design. Okay.
I'll do that. Get a hold of Gary, I appreciate it.
I'll do that. Okay. Get back to you.
All right. Bleeper?
Nothing.
Report from board, explain to me some.
Uh, I don't know. I don't know. Let's talk some more about that.
Forest Zone appeals?
Nothing.
ARB?
Uh, nothing at this time.
Forest Board?
Nothing.
Heim Memorial?
Nothing.
Well, everybody knows what's going on in Heim, Heim Memorial. Um, Kathy, who is not here? Is she?
Yeah.
Is she here?
No.
Oh, where's Kathy?
Here I am.
Oh, stand up and give the report.
I guess she can't speak.
Um, I apologize for my outfit, but anyway, um, we are really excited about what's happened on the green. Those of you that have been driving out 170, uh, in North Lima Road, that whole section there has been decorated and I think it's just phenomenal. Uh, the white lights that we originally purchased, uh, wouldn't have covered the decorations that we have there now. The Heim Fund set aside $3,000 to decorate the green and with the financial help of Michael Simon, we were able to turn that into a winter wonderland. Uh, we actually dropped our own electric line there, so we don't have any temporary hookups. Uh, we followed all the procedures and now we have our own box there, which will be locked and Heim Fund will be paying a monthly electric fee for any of those lights. So, that won't cost the village anything. Um, the main tree, the snowflakes we, we bought are all hung and lit and I think a few more were added, 'cause originally we only had 20. But there's a local group called Edison Lighting and they had some extras in stock. And Michael Simon purchased those for the village and so they're hanging there as well. The main Christmas tree, uh, because it's not in very good shape, um, instead of wrapping lights, we have them strung in sort of an architectural tree format. And those will be lit, uh, on the schedule, I hope you all have seen it, at 7:30 on the green. We also, uh, are going to be blocking off 170 and detouring people up to the light at Nesbit. I mean, blocking off North Lima Road to the church and then directing them up to Nesbit to make a right so they can go. So, the people can park, um, on the, uh, the Presbyterian parking lot and cross over and participate in the celebration. And, uh, it should be a lot of fun. I hope everyone can come and I hope you just won't stop at Village Hall because Lori and her group have been courteous enough to add the Heim, um, project on their program.
Okay. You didn't get a choir or anything, huh?
No, I have, um, no.
Or a band or something?
I, I could be there with the, the zoo.
Yeah. I know when you were gonna try.
I tried, really, Joe.
I know.
Uh, but I think the, my only alternative is a, is a friend of mine who will, um, do not acoustic guitar, but electric guitar and start Christmas carols. That's all I can do. Okay?
Yeah. Maybe we should get some song sheets, huh?
Okay. Well, yeah, like, you know what? I will talk to my friend and see what he has available. And I think maybe what, keep it to maybe three or four songs.
Yeah, yeah.
Are you gonna have song sheets?
Something.
No. We did one year and nobody used one. It's dark, can't see. Well, there's, down here in the...
Okay, we're gonna light the big tree.
Yes, at 7:30.
At 7:30, no.
Right.
This Saturday.
This coming Saturday.
And I think we're gonna have, um, Simon.
Michael Simon will be there.
Okay, because he keeps telling me about Ed Moransky, but I don't think he's involved, is he?
Well, I told Michael to cover that base, we would put, uh, as an acknowledgement, Michael Simon and Friends, because I've never gotten a word back about Ed Moransky.
No, I didn't.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good report.
Report from the Heim Board?
Second.
All favor? All right. Can you oppose?
I don't know for anything, he's very musical. Can't find a daughter, yes.
Oh, yeah, with the trumpet. Yeah.
I don't think we've seen that one yet, the class is quite young. I'll try, I'll try.
That'd be good, okay.
West Reserve Fire District, what's going on there?
Um, no, we'll meet, um, next week.
All right. Reports from special committees? Communications from residents? Will you speak as long as you're a village resident? Tell us your name, Ed, Mr. Smith.
Dave Smith, 321 Main Street, Poland. Uh, just to make you aware of another project the Poland Historical Society is taking on. Because of favorable comments we received about the McKinley historical marker last year, uh, people said, "Why don't we get some more?" We have decided to go ahead and apply for an additional marker. This would be placed at the village reed, following up on the green, I taught there. And it would talk about the village reed, the village graveyard next to the church, and that would be on one side of the marker. The other side of the marker would talk about the Presbyterian church that was established there in 1802. Uh, we would place it probably down at the Devil Strip near the highway so people stopping there at the light could be aware of it and see it as they were going through town. Uh, the cost is, uh, like the other one, about $2,600. If, uh, we're eligible to receive it, we get a $750 grant we did for the McKinley marker. We hope we do for this one too. This time, rather than solicit money from our public entities, we're gonna try to do it through private funding, through appeals to individuals, businesses, organizations to fund the marker. If everything goes as planned and the application's pretty far along, the money's... If we're eligible to receive it, we get a $750 grant we did for the McKinley Marker. We hope we do for this one too. This time, rather than solicit money from our public entities, we're gonna try to do it through private funding, through appeals to individuals, businesses, organizations to fund the marker. If everything goes as planned and the application's pretty far along, the money's gonna due till April 1st, we would dedicate it, bring celebrate Poland again like we did last year. And that's on June 28th, I think, this year, on the Saturday morning. So I'm just making you aware of that. Eventually, the mayor would need to sign off on that because it'll be on village property. And if anybody has any questions or objections, we'll try to handle those. That's it.
But Dave? You're gonna put the sign, the marker by the street?
Right.
But everybody, nobody stops there, you know, because it's arrow, green arrow. They just keep going on North Lima.
Well, people walk the fire, people going slow. It's just like up here, they don't stop there, but they see it.
Laura DeQuan, 19 Elm Street. I'm gonna hand out, these are the official night of lighting of village flyers. And you can see, we've had so many donors and I appreciate everyone here who's donated to the event. We've been able to list them all in the back. The schedule's a little bit more detailed than the, you know, the one I gave you originally. Couple of things we need to talk about. We still need to get the gazebo lights up. The icicle lights need to get up on the gazebo. It's what?
It's a gift.
Yeah, I know, yeah. Are you? I hope so, I hope so. The volunteer fire department, somebody had mentioned at one point, we could maybe have them, man the fire barrels that we have. Does anybody have a contact with the fire, volunteer fire department?
Just calling through the office. I ain't shit into the phone.
That's just them? I mean, I just could call and ask them to, even if there are a few of them over here. We've got ninety Columbus doing barrels, but it'd be nice to have them if they want to.
I know when we do our flag disposal ceremony, I just call and tell them and they send people on my phone.
Okay. But I guess you and I had said that we weren't, about the fire barrels? We didn't ever get official...
I'm not sure.
Approval of the fire department.
Oh, yeah, we'll have to talk to fire department on that. Oh, as far as putting them on?
Yeah, right, right.
Does council have a problem with the fire barrels being on the property?
I mean, I put bricks under them so they're not burning the ground. There's probably gonna be snow that night anyway, so.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, so as long as it's still okay, then I call fire.
Nobody's...
Okay, they are bringing sand down, so they're involved in that way. And we also, we talked about needing a police presence out at the street, so I think we're good there.
Okay, Russ? Somebody require helping cross street? And then North Lima Road thing? Okay.
And the only other big issue is the lights, of course, the electrical.
Which are gonna be thirsty, is that what you said?
Might be tomorrow.
Okay.
Might be tomorrow.
Before it gets a little cold again.
It's, well, it's Saturday.
I know, yeah.
I talked with, talked with an entity today. They promised me they would get it done Thursday, but we might be flopping on that and getting somebody else. But it's gonna get done.
Okay.
It's gonna get done.
The only thing, I'm so excited to have the village green and all that part of it as well. And I've gotta point out that somebody, a few people have said to me, made the comment that I think the village green is trying to upstage your event. That was the comment that they made. And I said, well, wait, first of all, it's not my event, it's the village. And it's lighting of the village, so any lights that are beautiful in the village, I think should be part of this event. I think the one thing I would point out to council though is it's a big difference between what it's gonna look like up there and what it's gonna look like down here. And it really does make, unfortunately, this area, the decorations look rather shabby, I think. I mean, it's like Rockefeller Center versus Polonjilers. Which, the only thing I can suggest is that council put together a committee, start in January and try and get some better decorations and some better lights for...
Well, I was going to ask the finance committee and Chairman of Blue Room to appropriate some money for next year and we'll see what the, see what the finance committee says about that.
And we need to get started quick. I mean, unfortunately, wait until July and all the Christmas things are already underway and...
And a, an outside group offering donations would always be a nice thing.
Yeah.
We were, the Heim Fund started out with a nice little plan and then we got very fortunate with somebody from the outside that made it exceedingly great.
And it's what it takes, it's a connection. It takes somebody to pick up the phone and they get a phone call, you know, and I, we don't, my group, our charter has been to put on the event. And I don't think it's under our umbrella to upgrade the decorations for the village. We're pretty much maxed out on what we're doing now. So if the council, if you put together a committee, I'd be happy to be on it, but I don't think it should be the junior women that, you know, come in and try and update all these decorations. But right now, it's just a matter, we can't do it anyway before now because we didn't have the power to do it. We don't have the electricity to power all the lights that we need anyway, so. And I gotta say, it's a little bit frustrating to be five years trying to get the electrical down here and it takes, what, it took you a week and a half to get a new line up there? That was a little bit, I'm just kinda pulling my hair out, but if everything can be fixed, the lights will stay on for more than two minutes and 23 seconds on Saturday.
Two and a half.
Yeah, just end your remarks and tell everybody to go, make sure they're out of there after two minutes, you know, it'll be there. But yeah, we appreciate everyone's support, hopefully everyone will come. It's gonna be a little bit chilly, but it...
We've got fire.
Doesn't look like there's, yeah, we got fire. It doesn't look like there's gonna be any rain, might be snow, but, so, yeah, if you just let me know, make sure that if there's anything that goes wrong with the electricals. You're pulling your hair out too, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I've got flyers if anybody here wants to.
Yeah, we used to give a donation to Polonjian Women's Club because they do both, do concerts and Christmas thing, they put a lot of effort into. Of course, we had to cut back so much during recession time that we no longer give that. We don't give to the veterans any longer. We don't give to Polonjian Women's Club. And so what we had asked everybody to do back then was see if you can possibly support a few of the events that you like personally, personal donation, that that would also help them to, you know, continue doing what they do so well.
This is a little different, this is our property. You know, we're decorating our property, so that's why I'm ready to ask you to have finance to chip in if you want to decorate the village property.
Did we make any progress on that property back there? We're still in that new school.
No, we're still, I mean, we're still on the market.
Sir? Sorry. My name's Steve Platts, I'm a resident at The Ledges and also on the board of trustees. And I just wanted to take a minute to thank council for taking the time to make sure that proper notice is given to the residents so there's proper discussion and so the planning commission can make a decision without being in a vacuum. So again, I thank you, I appreciate your understanding and your time.
What's your address?
Forty The Ledges. Thank you.
Sure. Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, any new business? Any old business? Motions, ordinances, and resolutions? Second and third readings? Presentation of the bills?
Make a motion that the bills be paid.
All in favor? Oppose? Questions from the news media? By council, Linda.
I'd just like to thank everyone who's asked for tonight, who, the historical people who have done such a wonderful job for us, and everyone who's working on the Christmas production, Kathy, Lori, and your whole gang that has been working with you. We're very fortunate to be in a community like this.
Mr. Leader?
Well, I echo what has been said and also appreciate all the efforts that you've all made to make our village a village.
Chris?
I will also echo Linda and Ms. Galan. Thank you.
Echo, echo, echo.
Yeah, thanks, Jenny, great work. Michael Simon, need to say his name because he's really special. And just a really, a special thank you to Kathy Lynn, she's on the Heim Fund Committee, but she really shouldered all the work for this project and she stood by it as it all got done and completed. Thank you, Kathy.
I also thank everybody.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:38.
All in favor? Please, sir.